Good evening. Welcome to the School Board meeting of Independent School District 271 Bloomington Public Schools. Today is Monday, February 8, 2021. It is 7:00 PM. The school board meeting tonight is being conducted remotely via Google Meet. It is being livestreamed by BECTV and will be replayed per the usual BECTV replay schedule. Please consider that while most of us in this meeting or viewing this meeting are not in the same room, all of us, wherever we are in Bloomington or the metro area, are on the traditional ancestral and contemporary land of indigenous people. Bloomington Public Schools rests on Dakota land seated in the treaties of 1837 and 1851. Okay, let's go with roll call. So all board members who are in attendance, please let me know your present. Director Bibi?
I didn't hear you. Here.
Director Bennett?
Here.
Director Olson?
Here.
Director Sorum?
Here.
Director Steiga?
Here.
Director Starks?
Here.
And Korman, here. So all board members are present tonight. Next, we'll move to Pledge of Allegiance. Where is our beloved flag? Thank you, Director Bibi. We have her almost there. So please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God. Thank you. Next, we have approval of the agenda. I'd like to move approval of the agenda.
Second, Steiga.
Thank you. Director Bibi?
Aye.
I need you to go off this computer.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum? Director Sorum?
Aye.
I think you froze. I think you froze for a moment. Thank you. Director Steiga?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Korman, the agenda has been approved. And before we continue with our agenda, I just quickly want to say a big thank you to everyone. If you are a parent, thank you. If you are a student, thank you. Thank you for being so resilient. Thank you for being so brave during this very difficult school year. If you are a member of our administration, thank you for your efforts. We know this has not been easy for anyone, so thank you. If you are a member of the cabinet, thank you. If you're a person who works with the Office of Educational Equity, thank you. All other departments, transportation, custodians, secretaries, a whole variety of people that we have working for our Bloomington schools. Thank you so much. If you have any type of connection with Bloomington Public Schools, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the school board. Because everybody has been doing an amazing, amazing job considering the situation and the circumstances of the past year. So thank you for being here with us tonight as well. And if you are the superintendent of the school district, thank you too. Thank you for your hard work. Communication Department to everyone. I cannot think of everyone, you know? BECTV, you know? Mr. Holman, everyone, thanks a lot. Okay, let's move on to recognition of students, staff, and public. We're gonna start with the Black History Month proclamation. So would someone please read our resolution that we have with us tonight? Director Olson?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached proclamation proclaiming February 2021 as Black History Month in the Bloomington schools.
Second, Steiga.
Thank you. I'm gonna proceed to read the resolution, I mean, the proclamation. So, Black History Month, February 2021. Whereas in 1926, Harvard scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson established Observance of African-American History Month to acknowledge the history of people of African heritage, which goes back thousands of years and includes some of the greatest, most advanced, and innovative societies in the history of human existence. And whereas African-Americans have played a significant role in the history of the state of Minnesota, from the early days to our present day, leaders in education, agriculture, government, the arts, finance, and international trade. And whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the rich history and teachings of African-Americans and bear witness to the progress, beauty, and achievements they have made throughout our region. Whereas, we must also recognize and pay tribute to all who have struggled with adversity and injustice and all who've taken incredible risks to advocate for equality. And whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout our American experience. And whereas the history of African-Americans and that of Americans from all the world's cultures is reflected in the curriculum, learning materials, activities, and celebrations throughout the year in the Bloomington Public Schools. Now, therefore, we, the Bloomington School Board, proclaim the month of February 2021 to be Black History Month in the Bloomington Public Schools. We encourage all staff, students, families, and residents to join in celebrating the collective in January, creativity, cultures, and traditions of African-Americans, and to continue honoring the contributions of Black Americans throughout the year. Director Jenna Mitchler, Assistant Superintendent? I believe you take this one?
Thank you, Chair Korman. So Chair Korman, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board, thank you for tonight recognizing Black History Month, the month of February. As you stated, Chair Korman, Black History Month was proposed by Harvard-trained historian Carter G. Woodson and established in 1926. And it's the acknowledgement of Black History Month that's created this annual celebration for us as an achievement of Black Americans and as a time of recognizing the central roles of African-Americans in U.S. history. Every president has designated the month of February as Black History Month since 1976, and we are proud as a school district to also be recognizing the month of February. So with that, I'll hand it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchler. Such a very important recognition month. So let's celebrate together. All those in favor in approving Black History Month proclamation, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Steiga?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Korman, aye. Thank you. This has been approved. Okay, so the next one, we have a very important recognition. And this is the City of Bloomington pioneer and change-maker, Mrs. Deana Wade-Arley. So I would like to call again Assistant Superintendent Dr. Jenna Mitchler.
Thank you, Chair Korman. And so with us tonight is Director Deana Wade-Arley, who's our Director of the Department of Educational Equity. And it's my honor tonight to share with the school board and with the community that she has been recognized by the City of Bloomington as a Bloomington pioneer and change-maker. And so, as you know, she works with our Department of Educational Equity and a team of folks that are just really phenomenal. We really couldn't do the work we do in our district without that team and without her leadership. The team serves families. They help them overcome challenges and address barriers to success. And she has a background in social work and volunteers extensively. She works with the NAACP's Afro-Academic Cultural, Technological, and Scientific Olympics. And we're just really pleased tonight that we can the city. So with that, I would like to hand it over to Deana. If you would mind just saying a few words for us tonight, Deana?
Thank you, Dr. Mitchler. Madam Chair, Board Directors, Superintendent, Executive Council, and to our viewing audience. It is an honor to be acknowledged for the hard work and the passion. And sometimes it's looked at as a little different. But I love education. I love all children. And I love social justice. And these things make me so proud to be a part of the Bloomington community. And I love, love, love being a part of the Bloomington Public Schools. I have given my life to it. And my son is in Bloomington Public Schools. And I truly can say that it has been a pleasure to serve. And I continue to do so until otherwise. Thank you so much for the honor. City of Bloomington, thank you. I just love being a Bloomington person. I don't live in Bloomington, but you would think I did. Thank you.
And thank you, Deana.
It's a big clapping for you because we are also so proud of having you in our school district. You represent us really well. And I think it's true, you know? We always think of you as someone who actually lives in Bloomington because you're always so committed to our students and our families. So we're very fortunate to have you with us for so many years now. So thank you so much. There's a lot we have learned with you and through you, with your department, you know? So congratulations to all of them too because you are representing who we are in our Office of Educational Equity. So thank you.
Madam Chair, I couldn't do it without the Office of Educational Equity staff. And I couldn't do it without Jenna and without Les Fujitaki, to be honest. I'm just one person, a part of this wonderful team, and it takes all of us to make it go. So thank you.
Correct, yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Mitchler. And as we talk about, you know, the things that we cannot do without others, and as I continue through my thank yous today, once again, thank you, everyone. Thank you, teachers. I did not mention you, but it's because I'm a teacher. And usually, I don't think as us, as being coming as the first to say thank you to ourselves. So thank you so much, teachers. Thank you, thank you. And our counselors, you know, staff in the cafeteria. And it will probably keep coming, but to everyone. I just didn't want to escape anyone that came to mind as I continue through my meeting, through our meeting. Okay, well, let's continue with recognitions. And then we have the MSBA awards. So on January 30th, the Minnesota School Board Association held a virtual award ceremony honoring the accomplishments of board members around the state. Some of our school board members were honored as part of that ceremony. Beth Bibi was a recipient of the Director's Award, recognizing 100 hours of MSBA trainings within a four-year period. Leadership Development Certificates were awarded to Beth Bibi, Maya Olson, and Heather Starks for completing all four phases of MSBA board member training. Congratulations to our directors. Well done. I don't know if any of you want to say something really quick?
I guess I would just like to say that, and I know that this is true for the other board members too, but those workshops are actually really fun because as teachers and being involved in education, we love to learn, right? And so those are opportunities to learn. And that's one of the very fun parts of being on school board.
I would like to say that I've really appreciated all the opportunities to be able to take in the different workshops just to keep learning and to keep growing in this role. There's so much, and MSBA has been a great resource. And it makes it easy to accumulate 100 hours because there's so many interesting things to learn. So my hat is off to them and glad we have the good relationship with them. And I'm gonna keep pressing on, hopefully. So thank you.
Director Starks, do you feel pressured to say anything or you're good?
I'm good. Ditto to both of them.
Okay, thank you again and congratulations. Yeah, learning is very important. Okay, the next one is recognitions of public. On the school board page of the district's website, there is a link for Bloomington residents, district staff, students, and parents to submit a comment to the school board. Submitted comments might be read during the recognition of the public portion of the meeting, providing that the comment is not related to topics on tonight's agenda and guidelines outlined on the comment form have been followed. We allow up to 15 minutes to listen to public comment that has been submitted prior to the meeting. If the board receives comments that exceed the 15 minutes, those comments not read during the meeting will be shared with the school board. Should there be no comments or only a few that take less than the allotted 15 minutes, the meeting will proceed. A reminder that the school board listens to public comment and does not respond during the meeting. Typically, matters are referred to administration. Mr. Cavman, do we have any public comment for tonight?
Madam Chair, members of the school board, Superintendent Fujitaki, and those viewing the meeting tonight. We currently do not have any submissions for this evening. So with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just want to acknowledge that we have received several emails. And I just want the public to know that we have received them and we have read them. Okay, so I guess we move into our Part A. So I'd like to move approval of Part A of the agenda. And that would be board business. That includes minutes, regular actions, et cetera. So is there a second for that?
Second, Beth Bibi.
Thank you. All those in favor approving Part A of the agenda, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Steiga?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Korman, aye. This Part A has been approved. Okay, so we move into Part B of the agenda. And the first item that we have is the Revised School Calendar 2021. 2020, 2021. Would someone please read that resolution? Director Steiga?
Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the revised calendar for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by Director Steiga and second by Director Bennett. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Jenna Mitchler.
Thank you, Chair Korman. Superintendent, members of the board. So tonight, I'm bringing to you a couple of changes with our 2021 calendar. So that's our current year calendar. And I think as many people know, probably everyone is aware now, we've had to shift to distance learning at the elementary level recently due to an outbreak that we had. So it's a two-week shift. It's in accordance with our Safe Learning Plan. The unfortunate part, and there's more than one unfortunate thing, of course, about needing to make this shift due to an outbreak. But one of the unfortunate implications here is that we needed to bring students back on a day that would have already been a scheduled professional development day for staff and a non-working day for some of our staff. So we realized this is really a challenge for many people in that students and families may not have otherwise planned to come to school on this day. It was normally structured as a non-instructional day. Some of our staff had not planned to work, but we really wanted to get students back in buildings as soon as we could. If we would have waited longer, it would have been almost three weeks before we could have had our elementary students back in buildings because we would have needed to wait until the 17th, so the following week, Wednesday. We know people have started, students have started establishing routines. Teachers had started establishing routines when they had the students in the buildings. And we really just don't want to go longer than that, that two weeks before we bring students back. So doing everything we can to get students back in buildings as soon as possible. So for that reason, the change that you see proposed here is that we're switching the February 12th Professional Development Day. We're moving it to later in the calendar. So we'll move it to April 30th, which will be just a change for elementary, non-BOS students. And then that would make the 12th now an instructional day for our elementary, non-BOS students. And I've processed this change with our calendar committee, with our elementary principals. And the recommendation I put forward to you all is also their recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions? Director Starks?
So, Ms. Mitchler, I'm gonna ask you the same questions I asked you in Calendar Committee, if that's okay? So just the first one, I just want to just make sure I have this right. So this will be the first day then for our third through fifth graders. Is that correct?
Yes, that's a great question. And so, yeah, right. So we can bring back all of our K through five students at the same time. We don't need to do the phased rollout as we would have originally. So we will be bringing back K through five students who are interested in that in-person learning on Friday. That's right.
Okay, and so then the other question that I asked, because when you first brought this to Calendar Committee, I thought, okay, well, as a parent, I'm looking at it going, okay, my kids, you know, they'd be distance learning, then they'd go back for one day in person, then there's a four-day weekend, and then Wednesday. And so, you know, I was like, does this make sense? Can you share what you heard from other stakeholders and such that where it does make sense?
Yeah. So one of the, I guess I'll say, silver linings of this, well, there's a couple. I think one is we get students back as soon as we can, right? It's at the end of that two-week break. So it's the absolute soonest we can get students back in buildings, which I think is good for many students and families and staff with regard to routines, like I said before. I think another one of the silver linings with this is that we're going to be able to try out having the K through five students in the building for one day. And then we go into a weekend, which gives, you know, principals, if they need some time to do some reflection or anyone else, right, as we adjust, and then come back that following Monday, ready to serve all of those students again for a longer week. So we're looking at that as a positive, that we can bring students back for one day. And then we have a little bit of a break over the weekend to reflect and then make sure we can bring everybody back and have a good Monday after that.
Thank you. That was helpful to me to hear because we've received that comment or question. So I appreciate you sharing the reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Director Olson?
This isn't a question, but I just, I was concerned that I've heard from a lot of people that they had planned travel because of that expected date off. And I am concerned about that with COVID. So I just wanted to mention that the travel, well, that will be brought up again later in the meeting. But the traveling and then coming back to school concerns me.
Thank you. Okay, so let's, I think we're ready to vote. So all those in favor of approving the 2021 calendar revise, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Steiga?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Korman, aye. So this one has been approved. Thank you. So we move into the next calendar, which is the school calendar 21 to 22 revised. Could someone please read that resolution? Director Bennett?
It's be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the revised calendar for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second, Steiga.
Thank you. Dr. Mitchler?
Thank you, Chair Korman. So with this, with this calendar revision, we're talking about next school year, so the 21, 22 school year. And for this change, I'll just say I'm very grateful for everyone who's reached out because, you know, it's through hearing from our community and getting feedback from our stakeholders that we really learn and grow and adjust based on what we hear. And so one thing that we had missed in creating this calendar and approving this calendar in the past was that the first day of school falls on a very important day for the Jewish faith. So it's Rosh Hashanah would have, starts on the sixth, the evening of the sixth, and then it goes through the eighth. And we had planned to start school on the seventh of September. So we had heard from a lot of our stakeholders, you know? We try our best to work around important holidays, but we know also that the first day of school is really important for students and families. So we want to do everything we can there to be accommodating. So the Calendar Committee met. We did some revisions. The only change here that's being proposed is that we push back the start of the school year by one day. So we'll start instead on September 8th. And so that would mean secondary students are in buildings. On the eighth, elementary has their early assessment day. And then all elementary students in buildings starting on the ninth. So that's, again, just shifting everything one day. And then that would mean we'd add a day to the end of the calendar in June. And so luckily for us, that doesn't push us out another week. It just means we have a full week then, that second week in June. So we'd be finishing on June 9th.
Thank you. Any questions? Director Bennett?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Mitchler and the Calendar Committee for recommending this change. And also thank you to our community for letting us know. We weren't the only district that made this. Apparently, there were several districts. So it's something that we will try to avoid, as Dr. Mitchler said. So I think it's good that we're making this change. So thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands, so we're going to move to vote. All those in favor of approving this calendar revise, 2021, 2022, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Sorum?
Aye.
Director Steiga?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Korman, aye. This calendar has been approved, this resolution. Thank you. Okay, so next, we have the model movement for secondary schools. Director Sorum?
Thank you. Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves and authorizes the administration to implement a model movement plan for secondary schools subject to stable COVID case rates based on the seven-day average and case data in students and staff in March. One, middle school grades six through eight from distance learning to hybrid learning beginning Monday, March 1st, 2021. Two, high school grades nine and 12 from distance learning to hybrid learning beginning Thursday, March 11th, 2021. Three, high school grades 10 and 11 from distance learning to hybrid learning beginning Monday, March 15th, 2021. Four, middle school staff preparation days, February 24th through 26th, 2021. And high school staff preparation days, March 8th through the 10th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second, Steiga.
Thank you. So I'd like to call Superintendent Les Fujitaki.
Right. Thank you. Good evening, Chair Korman, school board members, and the viewing audience. On the screen is a PowerPoint presentation that is intended to share the dates and the rationale for moving our secondary schools from distance learning model to the hybrid learning model. Next slide, please. Right. You can move on to the next slide, please. Thank you. Frequently asked question is, why are some districts moving at a different pace than other districts from distance learning to hybrid? We pose this question because this is an example of inconsistency in how districts are responding to the pandemic. And this inconsistency is resulting in confusion by stakeholders. The answer to this inconsistency question The answer to this inconsistency question, all these inconsistent, inconsistent questions are the same. There are two answers to this question. The first is state guidance. Please recall, the Governor, the State Departments of Health and Education provide guidance for safe learning for all school districts. Next slide, please. First, one of our state guidances prescribes three learning models for all school districts. Distance learning, that's the model our secondary schools are currently in. Traditional, which is in-person, in-school learning. And the third is hybrid, which is a blend of business learning and traditional learning models. These are all prescribed for all school districts, and all school districts must adhere to these learning models. Now, I'll ask Hannah Hatch, our Director of Health Services, to share guidance information for moving between the three learning models and our respective COVID health data. Hannah, please.
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki. Good evening. This model here placed in front of you is one you're very familiar with seeing. This is the chart that is taken from the Safe Learning Plan that was presented by the Governor. We have had this chart all year long, and it has not changed for any of the secondary schools. It's laid out a little differently tonight, so that you can easily see where it places each school level at where the numbers are. So you will see that zero or less than 10 would place all levels in-person learning. And then in the 20 to 30 category, which we're going to discuss tonight, would place all levels in hybrid learning. Elementary was excluded from this plan and this chart when the orders for the Safe Learning Plan were updated in last November by the Governor. So we are looking at the 20 to 30 tonight, which would put all of, both middle school and high school in hybrid. Prior to this week, we fell above 30, so you can see that that places both levels in distance learning. Go to the next slide, please. This graph is a representation for you of Hennepin County, Bloomington, and the surrounding areas, and where our case rates have fallen the last three weeks. So please note that Bloomington, the yellow line with the blue diamonds, has been above other surrounding communities the past three weeks. The gold standard is to follow the Hennepin County 14-day case rate. That is the blue line with the red circles that's falling in the middle. It's an average of all the, all the cities in Hennepin County. That is what we're directed to with the Safe Learning Plan. Last fall, many districts reached out to the Governor and the state and said that they would like to look at city data, because their cities vary dramatically from what the county numbers were reflecting. At that time, the Minnesota Department of Health did say that school districts with their public health can consider city data in conjunction with the Hennepin County case rate when looking at a model change. So please remember that in order to make a shift, they want you to be well within the range, below 30, and see consistency. So you don't want to drop down for just one week. You want to have consistency within that range. This blue horizontal line indicates the level at which you can stick, switch to hybrid. So you will see that some of our surrounding communities dropped below that line much sooner than we were able to in Bloomington. Next slide. I'm going to reiterate why districts are moving between learning models quicker than other districts. So first, as you can see, the state guidance. So they're following the state guidance, and some surrounding communities dropped a lot quicker than we did. If you remember, Eden Prairie was well below the line weeks ago, where this week is our first time we have seen numbers below 30 in Bloomington. The second thing is that some districts have decided not to adhere to the state guidance. We have seen this inconsistency through the years, as school districts have not wanted to follow some of the state guidelines in that Safe Learning Plan. And we're continuing to see that. As, as our district 271, we have really wanted to stick to continuing to follow the state guidance and be consistent in that, to follow all the recommendations, all the mitigation strategies, and continue to follow the Safe Learning Plan Model Movement guidelines as well. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Superintendent Fujitaki.
Thank you, Hannah. I want to recognize Hannah and Dr. Kelly, the administrative Williams and Public Health Department, for all their work and help on this. They meet regularly with the Department of Health to review all this information and to get firsthand direction from those departments. They can pose questions and give us feedback quickly. So now, administration's recommendations on the dates for moving from distance learning to hybrid. These are dates that are in the resolution that was read and seconded. Next slide, please. First, these are additional state guidelines that are to be followed by school districts for moving from distance learning to hybrid learning models. Okay, first, no more than three grade, grade levels can move at the same time within a building. This guideline applies to our high schools, because our high schools, of course, have four grade levels. Therefore, we are not allowed to move all four of our grade levels, nine, 10, 11, and 12 grades, at one time from distance learning to hybrid learning. For this resolution, we are proposing to move two grade levels, ninth graders and seniors, in the first week. The rationale is ninth graders haven't been in our high schools, and seniors need to prepare for graduation. The second state guideline is that our district needs to wait two weeks to move to additional grade levels in that building. For example, at Jefferson or Kennedy, we can only move up to three grade levels. So we're proposing to move two. Then the remaining two, the 10th and 11th graders, would have to wait two weeks before moving from distance learning to hybrid. Fortunately, the state grants local public health departments the authority to review local conditions, and if conditions warrant, permit only a one-week wait. Therefore, thank you to Dr. Kelly of Bloomington Public Health Department for permitting our high schools to only wait one week after the ninth and, ninth graders and seniors move to distance learning, so that the 10th and 11th graders don't have to wait two weeks. All they have to do is wait one week. Another state guideline allows districts to give teachers up to five days of prep for moving from distance learning to hybrid learning. And prep means they need to prepare their classrooms and all their materials. Next slide, please. So based on COVID case rates and state guidelines, here is a summary of our recommendations in the resolution to be voted on tonight. I'll start by explaining the middle school model movement from distance learning to hybrid learning. Instead of the allowed five days for preparation, our middle school teachers will only be taking three days to prep for the movement, to prepare, and these dates would be the February 24th, 25th, and 26th. Middle schools have two, will have two cohorts of hybrid learning students per grade level. A cohort is a group of students. There'll be a group, of course, there'll be a group of distance learning students. So, for example, the sixth grade class will be divided into, to, some students will be in distance learning, other students will be in hybrid. The hybrid group will be divided into two cohorts. And, okay, all hybrid students, middle school students, will start on March 1st. Remember, there are two cohorts. The fourth cohort will start in-person on March 1st, and the second cohort will be in remote learning on that date. Please recall, hybrid is a blend of in-person and distance learning. Then the next day, it flips. So the second cohort will be in-person, and the first cohort will then flip to remote learning. This is how and when we are proposing to move our middle school students from distance learning to hybrid. Starts on March 1st. Now I'll explain the high school movement from distance learning to hybrid learning. Instead of the allowed five prep days, our high school teachers will be only taking three days to prep for the transition, March 8th, 9th, and 10th. Ninth graders will be divided into two cohorts. Orientation for the first cohort will be on March 9th. Orientation for the second cohort will be on March 10th. The first cohort of ninth graders will begin in-person learning on March 11th, and the second cohort of ninth graders will be in-person learning on March 12th. Very similar pattern to the middle schools. Seniors will be divided into two cohorts. The first cohort of seniors will begin in-person learning on March 11th, and the second cohort of seniors will begin in-person learning on March 12th. The 10th and 11th graders will be also divided into two cohorts. Both cohorts will begin hybrid learning on March 15th. The first cohort will begin in-person learning on March 15th. The second cohort will begin in-person learning on March 16th. Of course, these dates are subject to change if COVID case rates spike, if there's a sustained upward trend in our case rates. Before I move on with this presentation, if the vote is taking place tonight, no, no, I want, I want to back up here. What's happening now is that why is it taking this long to move from? If we're taking a vote tonight, why is it taking to March 1st to move the middle school students to hybrid learning? It's because one week, we're going to have to do a parents' preference survey. And then armed with that parents' preference survey, our transportation department needs two weeks to do a detailed routing, especially for special ed students and homeless students. So it's going to take a full three weeks to make the transition. Our high schools are waiting to start on March 8th, which is the start of the third trimester, to move from distance learning to hybrid. So middle schools are moving. They're going to take the three weeks, because we need one week for the parents' preference survey, two weeks to do the routing schedule for transportation. High schools are moving on the 8th, because that's the start of the third trimester for high schools. Now I'll turn it over to Rick Koppen, our, our COVID program coordinator for our district, and he will share an overview of the hybrid models and communication plans. Rick, please.
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki. What I would love to share with you are the middle school and high school hybrid models. But we want to be real clear that we've shared these with the board in October, and again, January 12th, the Community Engagement Event. The hybrid models have not changed with respect to what was presented in those previous times. This is what we will be sharing with parents in a message tomorrow to our middle school parents and our high school parents. For the middle school parents, the hybrid model will look like this. As Superintendent Fujitaki explained, each of the class, each of the grade levels will be split into two cohorts. That is, in keeping with state guidance for hybrid learning model of 50% capacity in your schools during hybrid learning. Cohort one will meet on Monday, is in-school instruction. Cohort two will be in-school instruction on Tuesdays. Wednesdays will be remote learning for all students with in-person enhanced supports. And Thursday and Friday will be live virtual learning for both the cohorts, as well as distance learners. Live virtual learning, or face-to-face direct instruction, is what the middle school students have currently been experiencing in the distance learning on all five days. For the high school hybrid model, students in the hybrid model will also be grouped into two cohorts, as Superintendent Fujitaki laid out earlier. Those cohorts will attend school two days per week in a block schedule format. Students who choose to remain in distance learning will continue to learn remotely. And all students will learn remotely on Wednesdays. So again, as you look at the screen for those visual learners, cohort one will be in-person learning, direct instruction at school on Mondays and Thursdays. Cohort two on Thursdays and Fridays. And Wednesday will be a supports day. In addition to each day, distance learning students will have a block of time in the afternoon for live, direct supports from their teacher. The goal ultimately, as we noted earlier, with the distance learning moved to hybrid, and at the elementary level, when we moved to traditional, is to do the same with the secondary schools. The hybrid learning model, as many districts in the metro and greater Minnesota area found, is a launch, launching point from distance learning into a traditional model. So our goal within Bloomington Public Schools and the work of all the COVID response teams and the learning model teams is to move us as quickly as possible to a traditional learning, in-person, four or five days a week, when case counts allow us to do so. The last slide I want to share with you before we turn over to, back to the board is this evening, we are seeking board action to allow the movement to a hybrid learning for both middle school and high school on the dates indicated. We will then plan to inform parents, students, and staff in communication tomorrow. As Superintendent Fujitaki noted, we have developed a parent preference survey, very similar to what we did at the elementary level when we moved from distance learning to hybrid, and then hybrid to traditional. That is a critical piece to allow principals in the schools to determine what is, how many students are coming back? And then for staffing levels, what does that look like? And so once they have those numbers, they will be able to do their class scheduling. And that's why Superintendent Fujitaki indicated that three-week period that allows the one, the, you get the preference survey or the parent preference registration form out, give three or four days in which to complete that, and then allow the transportation to do its routing. So the parent preference registration form will go out tomorrow with an additional information narrative, part of the message about the hybrid model. One thing we've learned throughout this pandemic is that sort of a chicken and egg situation we encounter. If parents don't have adequate information to make the decision that best fits their child or children's needs with respect to remaining in distance learning or moving to hybrid learning, they can't make that decision. So we have learned from our past, and we will provide that additional information tomorrow. Principals then will do a follow-up. We do expect that the parents need to complete that registration form no later than end of day on Friday, February 12th. Again, that will allow principals to begin their work in staffing and student alignment, and with who's coming cohort one, who's coming cohort two, and for transportation to complete its work in the following two weeks in order for us to open, get ready to go on March 1st. Now, we also are excited to announce that next Thursday, February 18th, we will have our fifth Community Engagement Event. We've held these events, as you know, as, when we shift to a less restrictive learning model to allow parents the opportunity to see, get more in-depth information, but also to ask questions. So as we've done with the previous Community Engagement, this live virtual event will be carried live on BECTV, 7 o'clock PM, Thursday, February 18th. The questions allow parents to address specifically those questions or concerns they may have with hybrid learning, what the model will look like. We're excited to announce that we will have not only the school principals that will be on hand to present, as well as respond to questions, but also a counselor to address the social and emotional well-being of students, which is one of those areas that we've been receiving a lot of questions, and how we are addressing those. Our principals will be prepared to not only talk about the hybrid learning model, but their enhanced student supports that will be part of this return to school for our secondary students. With that, I will turn it back over to Madam Chair for the remaining part of this, this issue, this, this question at the, before the board. Thank you.
Thank you to our presenters tonight. Any questions for members? I'm going to start with Director Sorum. Director Sorum, your microphone is out.
I guess that would be important, wouldn't it? Madam Chair, speaking in support of this resolution, as it moves us closer to our goal of all students in a traditional in-person setting as soon as possible. I've appreciated all of the emails and some phone calls that I've received with the personal stories of frustration, struggles, and some successes. Now, as a veteran School Board member, I have five grandchildren in Bloomington schools, from a senior at Jefferson to a first grader at Ridgeview. I have sat with them on some days of I have sat with them on some days of DL and seeing the lack of participation by some virtual classmates. The attempts by teachers to engage all students is difficult. So I look forward to personal interaction. And I am satisfied with the facilities are extremely well-prepared to welcome our students back. I have visited many of the elementary schools, the middle schools and Jefferson. They are safe. However, my only concern is to have a fully complemented of staff to teach and support our students. Whatever reasons there are for not wanting to return are unfortunate. That sometimes seems to be the concern from day one. But the PPE and the air purifiers and spacing arrangements are in place for a safe return for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sorum. Director starts.
Thanks. Um, so I, I think that in the previous presentations in October and January, this um has been addressed, but if someone would be willing to um just talk a little bit about the differences, differences between the middle school and high school model, the one day a week for middle schoolers versus the two days a week for high schoolers, we received that question a couple of times. So if someone can just explain why those are, are different, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
I'll field that question. So uh we shared this information with the school board already in writing, but I'll cover it again. The primary reason is that, please recall, we have a middle school model for staffing. And we retained that middle school model going at the start of this year. The board voted to continue that. That model presents limitations for us as far as how we staff the building. Because it is based upon teams. I don't want to get too technical, but there's a difference in the way we schedule staff at the high school versus the middle school. And that staffing requirement limits our flexibility for middle schools. High schools have more flexibility because they have a different staffing model. And that's primarily the reason why when we, when the middle school administrators study this, they could not come up with a way to do it without hurting one of the groups, one of the cohorts, or the distance learning cohort of students. So this was what they came, this is what they came up with. Rick, do you want to add anything to that?
No, that's good.
I'm sorry. Do you have a follow-up question?
Well, kind of, in that same um thread of staffing. So um when we're talking about staffing to, are, are you doing the same, the same? Um. Let me just try to phrase my question correctly. So when we went to the elementary, uh we asked parents their preferences, but then you also talked to teachers. Is that same um procedure happening then for middle school and high school? And if so, will there be any um chances that students may be changing teachers or classmates through this process as well?
Oh, oh, I'll answer the second part. Rick, if you could take the preference survey, please. As far as the changing of teachers, that is a possibility depending upon the choices parents make. Because we have only so many teachers and so, and elementary is different than middle school because of the licensure issue. We have all these different licensures for middle school, elementary, just one license. So when you have multiple licenses, it makes it really complicated. If people choose to go to distance learning. It's, it's just a matter of numbers. It gets complicated. Rick, can you take the preference?
Yeah, Director Starks, can you, can you pose a question on the preference survey again?
So it was just, I know we're asking parents their preferences for students. Do we do the same for teachers? Or has that already, that process already been completed? For the secondary teachers?
It, we, it's my understanding at least is not in the preference survey. It's um, but again, very, it's a little bit different again with the hybrid. You, it's 50% capacity until they know how many students are coming back. They won't, they won't be able to figure out the, the staffing until they have that. So uh principals really won't have all that data. They'll have data as the parents complete the survey. They'll have real-time data, but they won't know that until the end of day on, on Friday. And then they're going to have to do, if we follow the same pattern, a significant amount of follow-up with parents that haven't completed the survey. Before they can start, I think in earnest next week in terms of dividing each of the grade levels by cohort and then assigning them by teachers.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Superintendent, you were gonna say something, sorry.
No.
Anyone else? Oh, Director Bennett.
Uh, yeah. So thank you for this plan and these, these target dates. Um, hopefully we'll be able to accomplish them and our, our numbers keep trending down. Um, I got a question. I'm not sure who wants to answer, maybe Dr. Kelly or, or the superintendent, but um I think it was back in December, the governor kind of amended the safe learning plan and kind of took elementary off of that, those requirements and wanted districts to prioritize K through five getting in school as a traditional every day. And in the last week or two, I've been hearing from like Dr. Fauci and Dr. Oshahome and the director CDC that they really want districts to prioritize getting K through eight into school tradition every day. And I'm wondering if anyone has heard, is the governor plan on amending the safe learning plan to make that possible, or are we still going to be held to? We have to be under 10 cases per 10,000 before we can have traditional secondary?
Dr. Kelly, can you help us with? That question?
Yeah, Director Bennett, uh, I've not heard any discussion about that happening here in Minnesota. The, that, as you kind of noted, would require a change in the safe learning plan that the governor's office is, is driving.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then I, I'd like a quick follow-up question. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the, where we're starting this hybrid. I think, you know, and I think everyone that put all their time and effort in these plans. And I'm wondering, is that going to be the, the limit of hybrid we can do while we're in the hybrid model? Or is this like a starting point and maybe in another month, the numbers are still trending down, we can look at adding another day or maybe in high school where you have one cohort go three days a week, the other go two days and then the next week flip? Is that even, that can be done? Has it been any of those conversations or is that just too complex to try to pull off?
All right, I'll take that question. All the administrators have done a lot of work coming up with these models. They spend time with, working with teachers. And just studying what other districts are doing. This is the model that they're recommending. If our goal is to transition as quickly as possible to in-person learning. And that's our goal. As soon as our case rates hit that, we will be moving quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Director BB.
I want to say thank you so much for those administrators and teachers that are working on getting this hybrid plan together. Um, I know that you have put in time and energy into just keeping things going daily and this on top of it is very appreciated. And I want you to know that I respect your decision of what you are able to do with the limitations that you have with the electives and the, the model that is being used. So just a real big, you know, shout out of appreciation. And I was just really, really encouraged to see this, and I think there's a lot of other families out there that are encouraged to see this as well. Um, I think it brings the hope that we want in the community and uh and it get lightens the load. So thank you very much and, and we'll just see how things go. We have to be patient with the process. We have to be respectful of those that are working hard. And um, you know, just encourage one another and encourage our kids. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director BB. I will agree with you. You know, what I've seen in this district is a very thoughtful district during this whole process because we're looking into uh the guidelines and it's a school district that has been paying close attention to what's been happening, the strengths of the COVID situation. And making sure that everybody can be as safe as possible. So um, I know, I knew that this um, this conversation was coming as um Superintendent, um, in your administration, you have said before that we will be looking into this uh in another couple of weeks, the last time that we met. And so here we are now looking into those dates as we see numbers coming down, of course. So I also appreciate the fact that we didn't rush into making promises that we were not probably not be able to fulfill. Still, anything can happen. So you know, we're kind of depending of this, of this big um COVID monster, as I would call it. Um, that really can change anything. But for now, we got this date going and I, I appreciate the work and the effort uh put into the, getting to this point. Director Olson, you have raised your hand.
Yes, I was just going to say that I appreciate that we're following state guidelines because, you know, a lot of people write to us and a lot of people get upset that we don't, um, you know, put that aside and just let kids back to school. I want to reassure people that I definitely understand where it, you know, my whole life has been dedicated to working with students. I care about all of them. I care about their social, emotional wellbeing. And sometimes I just have to speak out that sometimes, you know, I'm asked or it's implied that I might not care. And that can be further from the truth. Um. I just, I just want to ask people to really um take personal responsibility to help us stay in school because my concern is that there are a lot of students who are affected by the disruptions. And so we go back to school, something happens, we have to stop. That is very difficult on our students. And I, I just would really like to um, you know, ask that people take personal responsibility to to um help us stay in school and, you know, and we can all take action for the school.
Director Steiger.
Yes, um, I wanted to um add on to a little bit of what Director Olson is saying that um I know we just heard um Hannah Hatch say that, you know, our numbers have just gotten low enough here and we were higher than other areas as we all saw on the chart. And so I, my goal is absolutely with the administration is full-time students back to school. But that's not going to happen unless the community all helps it to happen. The things that we hear and see in the community of people having get-togethers and having house parties with students in is not going to help us get back to school. So for instance, um, in the district where my daughter teaches, right away, within a first, you know, a few days, some rooms already had to quarantine when they went back. That will still happen here. Just because we're going to hybrid does not mean that we will stay in school all the time. If there is an outbreak, we will still have people having to quarantine even while the rest are still in hybrid. And as we've seen with transportation, it can happen very quickly that we will have too large of outbreak and we will have to go back to distance learning. So if you want people to go to school, then we have to start helping in the community and everybody do their part so that our students can get back to school. And I'm very much in support of this. So can we um just please urge people to help?
Yeah, and just to follow up on that and um, and an email that we have received from one of our stakeholders as we go into um, spring break and many families are going on vacation. Uh, one of the concerns that, or the concern that was brought to us was also um, is the school district or has a school district plan on um, maybe maybe requesting that the, the families that leave, that they do not um send their, their kids to schools for the first couple of weeks once they have returned. And I just wanted to hear your take on that. I'm not asking you that you do that, but I just wanted to hear from you what your response will be in that case.
And you're looking. We can't control it. We can ask people to do things. The state has asked people to do things. It's up to the individuals to take responsibility. We can't we can't manage when they come back, whether we allow them back in school or they have the right to be here. Uh, yeah. That's the short answer to it.
And I, and I think that we all understand that, you know, that it comes down to having that type of responsibility that we're all, it's on all of us, you know, it's on, in our community. Um, and you know, of course, you know, in my, my case, you know, I'm, I'm in a way happy for the students to, excited for them because I know many of them are looking forward to being in the building. Uh, being there is part of what, you know, who you are. It's part of your identity. You've been growing up, being, going to school and learning there and being with your teachers and, and feeling engaged, et cetera. So I, I'm really um in a way happy and at the same time, I also want to say that I'm also thinking of the staff who will be returning. Uh, and you know, and some students too who feel the, in a way, um anxious about returning. I know that every single person wants to be in the school. Uh, but it's, it's, it's very normal and I, and I would ask um for all of us, you know, to have that type of empathy just to understand that type of feeling because obviously we are dealing with a pandemic, you know, who wouldn't feel anxious about it? It's very normal, but we'll be all, we all be there, you know, supporting each other. I myself will be returning to the classroom to be there every single day as well. So I, I understand um what it might feel like.
Okay, um, is there anyone else? I see a lot of hands raised, but I don't know if those are from previous hands. Director Steiger, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to add a couple of comments on the travel. Um, if people look at the State Department um health website, there are guidelines there about traveling. Um, because I have a daughter that is taking a job in another state and she did have to go there. And I looked up the guidelines and um it very clearly says that they recommend that she stay quarantined when she gets back from traveling to another state yet. And that was only like a week or so ago. So people, if, if you look, if you do feel for whatever reason, you know, there's a family emergency, whatever, somebody has to travel. Look at the guidelines on the state and they will tell you. Um, you know, guidelines as far as quarantining, as there's, if you have an exposure, guidelines for travel, et cetera, et cetera. And please look at the guidelines and that will help us get back to school. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And um, once again, for the community, remember that you can also um choose to continue to have your student in distance learning. Um, Director BB, I know you had your hand up, but you, you're good. Director Olson.
Yes, I just, I know that there are students who will be remaining in distance learning and teachers who will remain in distance learning. And so they just want to be reassured that they will not be behind the students who go back to school. You know, that they will have the same level of learning and you know, one of the reasons that I, I had personally, I don't vote based on my personal feelings, but um, you know, building a strong distance learning uh program and, and instead of this back and forth and back and forth seemed like a good idea, but I, I don't, I, I'm glad that I have experts to rely on for uh making decisions because that's a heavy burden to make any such of a, um, such a decision on, you know, based on my opinions. So um, I guess what I'm saying is that if we are going back, I just want the people who are in hybrid learning and the students who are in distance learning to feel that they are getting um, you know, the same type of, of uh education. It won't be the same type, but equal education.
I don't know if Superintendent has any comments on that?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Director Olson, for that, for that comment. I agree with you. Our teachers are doing an amazing job. They're adapting, they're innovating. They're doing heroic work right now. And in the face of this pandemic, it's, it's a challenge. Never experienced it before. So as far as what quality of education are, are students are getting, a great education, distance learning. I've been told by administrators that they're getting more direct instruction than in many other models. They're surprised at the amount of direct instruction students are receiving in distance learning. So the quality of education is there. And that's one of the reasons. I'm not going to go into the details. We just have great teachers and they're doing great work. And no matter what model they're in, they've adapted and they're doing great instruction.
Yeah, and we, and we appreciate that the hard work that they, they always do. Uh, but especially during this time, you know, and trying to accommodate all your curriculum and content and all the different needs, the, taking care of the academic and emotional needs of the kids every single day. I don't, I don't know and I'm not. I don't, I don't know and I'm not aware of any single person or teacher that, that is not, you know, doing the best that they can. That, or anybody that doesn't care. Every single person cares, just as every single person in this meeting and the people who are watching at home cares as well. So, Director Sorum.
A survey going out and to let, let our customers, let our people know, the families all know that there are the choices that they have to stay with different, to stay with distance learning or the hybrid. Many of the emails that we received from a lot of the parents of the frustration is, you know, hey, if you can't take care of us, if you can't service us, if you can't provide the things that we need, we're going to look elsewhere and we're going to make some choices that are going to, you know, benefit my family and my students. And so it's a way of life, choices, you know, we choose the church, we choose the city, we choose our color of our cars and everything else like that. We all have choices. And so to hear people say, hey, provide us the, the things that we need. My student isn't getting any particular attention in the class and he needs, he needs a structure, he needs this. And so as they are dealing with the frustrations and we're dealing with the frustrations of how to make a good program that our customers want, we have to deliver. And so we have to provide all of the things that they need. And it's very difficult, as was mentioned throughout this meeting tonight, but at the same time, it's going to be interesting to see the survey information that does come back.
Thank you. And you talk about frustration and I think it's something that is, once again, it's very normal to experience during a pandemic. So let's allow ourselves to feel it as well. And validate everyone's frustrations and feelings. Thank you, Director Sorum, for bringing that up. Director Steiger.
I just wanted to add that seems that the theme that I saw in commercials yesterday was we're all in this together. And that is kind of where we are. We are all still in this together. And to get to the other side, it will take everyone. All the teachers are doing their work, the administration is doing their work, and we need everyone else to do their part too.
Alright. Okay, I think we are almost ready to vote. And Director Starks?
So I was just going to say, I had other questions to ask, but I think that these are best suited for the community event that you're going to have on the 18th because they're, they're not going to inform my vote on the resolution. They're just more details about what's coming. So Mr. Kaufman, will there be the same structure before where parents can submit questions in advance to be answered at that event? And, and submitting questions live as well?
Director Starks, yes, it'll be a very similar format, just two different panelists, presenters, but we will be releasing that form this week for parents to start posing those questions. And they can also pose them that evening. It'll be a live event. Ms. Wade Hardley, is that wonderful staff will be there to help in translations for both Spanish and Somali. That has worked out fantastically. And so, yeah, we're looking forward to it. So February 18th, Thursday, 7:00, 8:30. There's your commercial.
Thank you.
Yeah, looks like I'll be working on another video, right? Making sure the dog doesn't bark every time I'm almost done. Yeah, and I'm so grateful that Director Deena is here with us tonight because it's so important to, to remember for our school district that every single person needs to get these communications. That all of our students, you know, our non-English speakers as first language, that they get this information as soon as possible. And so that they can also make their informed decisions and they know exactly what is going to happen when their students return. Another request that I have for administration is as you gather the information about return preference or student preference about the model, that if you could share with us a data on student population who are, how, what percentage of our students of color are choosing to stay in distance learning? Because we know that especially our BIPOC population is deeply affected by COVID. And I know that is, there is a deep fear on sending their students to the classrooms and many of them are choosing to keep them at home for that reason. There's multiple reasons why they will feel that, that type of fear and having their students in the classroom. But also, you know, we also know that our students of color tend to provide as well for their families financially. And, and so I would really like to have like numbers to know exactly where we're at as we, so that we can continue to provide those support systems, support services that we have, that we're already providing for students. So if you could please do that for us. And Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, I think Chairman Corbin, you did, you bring up a really good point and I want to make clear that also the parent preference registration form will be translated or is translated. It is both the narrative, the messaging, as well as the forms. And we also have staff at each of the three schools, five schools, I should say, that will be assisting in making sure to respond to non-English speaking parents. I think you also bring up a really good point and I don't want to, because we were asked today, well, what's, what do we think the percentage is going to be? We know around 74, 75% of our elementary parents chose the traditional model. It was a little bit higher in the hybrid model. We just don't know what that's going to look like from the secondary level. The data is really important because we did see, or we are seeing, at least at the elementary level, we do have more of our families, BIPOC families that are remaining home at distance learning. So it's, again, our, our leaders have done a great job, school leaders have done a great job to reach out to parents and respond to those questions as I'm sure they will continue to get. And with the Office of Educational Equities Office, Office, staff and others to help engage those parents, to help them better understand what the hybrid model looks like and the difference between the hybrid and the distance learning. So great points that you made tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And, and for, for those teachers who are watching tonight, especially ELL teachers, please don't hesitate to reach out. You know, I know that, I know perfectly well that you know of the needs of our students, specific needs. I know you care because we have received multiple letters of the things that you have, that you have witnessed, that you have experienced, that you know from your students and their needs. So please communicate with us, communicate with Director Wade Hardley because only through that type of communication, we will know what kind of support our students need. As we are here to serve all of our students, all of them. And we are here to care for all of them too. So thank you. Superintendent?
I'd like to take this opportunity to sincerely apologize, personally apologize to all the parents who wrote in expressing their disappointment and frustrations with some of our decision-making. We tried tonight to explain that we've been following state guidelines, we've been putting the safety of our students first. At the same time, apologize that we've not meeting their expectations. We'll continue to strive. Our goal is to get students back in the buildings, full-time, in person, as soon as possible. At the same time, we need to be careful. Thank you for this. We're getting great guidance from a number of places. Still, I've read everything that people sent in and I apologize for not meeting their expectations. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, for acknowledging that. And yes, thank you to our families for sharing your personal stories with us because those are your personal stories, the stories of your kids. And they are all valid. You're right, you're right. And the district is right too, you know, then as we care for the academic needs of your students, we also care for their safety. So let's, let's continue to communicate and let's continue to work together, you know, because that's how we are stronger. Bloomington Public Schools is a strong district, very strong. And that's the way we continue to remain strong is by working together. And we're here to listen. So thank you. Okay, anything else? I don't think so. I didn't see any more little hands up. Those little white hands in the screen, I mean. Okay, so I think we're ready to vote. So let's vote. I'm sorry to make you laugh. So all those in favor of approving the secondary schools model movement, please say aye. Director Sorum, you can turn your microphone off now. Thank you. Thank you. Director Bibi?
Yes, aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Steiger?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Corbin, aye. And this has been approved. So here we go. Thank you, Superintendent and members of the administration. Thank you, Ms. Hannah Hatch. And Dr. Kelly, you have been a big asset to us during this whole process and continue to be. So thanks a lot for your help and guidance. So, okay, so I think we're moving into our next item now. And the next one is the legislative priorities. And I know that you have received the document for the legislative priorities. So the committee, the legislative committee met with the Superintendent on January 26th and we met to talk about the possible priorities for legislature this, this year, the legislative session. And so you have the document and members of the committee are Director Bibi and Director Olson and myself. So I don't know, Superintendent, would you like to talk about those priorities as they were based on your recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Chair Corbin. The Board Legislative Committee is a standing committee. And the committee is chaired by our Board Chair, Corbin. As Chair Corbin pointed out, Director Bibi and Director Olson are members of the committee and we met on the 26th. One of the deliverables of the committee is to propose a legislative platform for action by the school board. At the 26th meeting, the members studied the governor's budget and education plan, the legislative platforms for various education organizations, and they also took into consideration input from the Bloomington Public Schools Advocacy Council. Armed with all this information, the committee drafted the proposed legislative platform that's attached to the resolution. Please note that this platform is different than prior year's platforms. The committee decided that they wanted a platform that was dynamic and fluid and would evolve as the legislature progressed through the session and bills gained or lost traction. So we'd be adding and changing this platform as we moved along. Administration, so I'm not going to go over each one of these items because they're probably going to change. Because we'll see based upon when the state forecast comes out, more changes are going to take place, more bills get amended. We will be adjusting this platform and bringing it back to the school board for consideration. So administration and I believe the committee, I know the committee recommends for approval this proposed platform.
Thank you, Superintendent. And I know we haven't read the resolution yet, but we'll get there. Sorry, sometimes I just, you know, I forget, but it's okay. Okay, so the, the other two directors who are members of the legislative committee, would you like to add something to this? Director Olson?
Well, I would like to add that there was something that the community and everyone can do immediately. There was an action alert posted by the Association of Metropolitan School Districts that said that the House Education Finance Committee will be hearing HF 843 on Wednesday, February 10th at 10:30 a.m. This is a bill that would increase the general education formula by 2% per year for the next two years. And, you know, because schools need stable and predictable funding instead of trying to guess what kind of funding we're going to get from here to here. So you can, people can look it up at the House Legislation Committee page or, yeah. But, so what we need people to do is call in and call members of their House Education Finance Committee or the, or contact the members, the representatives in your school district, which would be our Bloomington School District, which would be, you know, we have Representative Andrew Carlson, Representative Michael Howard, Representative Steve Elkins. And we need those representatives called and ask them to please support stabilizing school funding and supporting our students. Stabilizing school funding and that's HF 292, HF 843 and HF 292. I'm sorry, that might, I hope that was clear, but people can message us to and ask them. If they have questions about that, they can message us and ask us.
Thank you, Director Olson. Director Bibi?
Yes, I just want to communicate to our board members and, and that MSBA on Fridays is having a 30-minute legislative update. And it's been really helpful to see what is getting traction, what is coming up and some of the discussion around it. And to me, it's been really invaluable to keep me informed. And they do record it. So if you're not able to watch it at that time, it will be on the MSBA website. So that's one way to just stay informed and also to follow the different bills. And I have to say, I really enjoyed working with this legislative committee and with Superintendent Fujitake because I felt like we had some specific things that would benefit our district as well as other districts to be more specific in talking about funding or concerns. So I, I just really give my hat off to this group. It's been great working together. And I'm looking forward to seeing what comes and working hard on behalf of our district to let our representatives know, not just for Bloomington, but others of the things that we need to do. So thank you so much, team, and really appreciate you.
Thank you, Director Bibi. And now that you bring up MSBA, we also have AMSD that also serves as a great source of information. So the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, and you can find their website and on their page, you will find all the bills and they continue to update and information probably twice a week of what's happening with every single one of those bills. And so, you know, if you are a member of the school district or if you are a member of the community and you're passionate about legislative stuff, please go visit that page because you will find, you'll be able to find a lot of information on how things are moving. And especially during this year, you know, we have been facing for so many years so many challenges that are related to school finance, for example, our school funding. So it's, it's very important to really stay on top and especially during this pandemic time and what, what's coming and you know, all those, those different things that we need to advocate for, for our school districts. So, yeah. So before anybody asks any questions, if anybody has any, could someone please read the resolution? Director Olson?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves legislative priorities for the 2021 legislative session per the attachment that includes addressing the following: general education, allowance increase, pandemic enrollment loss, English language, special education, voluntary pre-K, teachers of color, online school certification, and Cruz-Guzman lawsuit.
There a second?
Second, Steiger.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Or additional comments? Director Starks, go ahead.
So a lot of these are the similar themes we hear year after year. I will be thrilled someday when like tying school funding to inflation is no longer an advocacy item because it's done. Like, there's a lot of these things that just can keep coming up. The, one of the ones that's new though is the pandemic enrollment loss. And Mr. Fujitake, I really appreciated the more detailed document that you gave us. But this is different than what we saw in the fall when there was the hold harmless. So could you just explain briefly the difference between the home heart, hold harmless option, which would have just given us funding based on last year's enrollment versus this declining enrollment option that it looks like the governor's proposing?
Okay, I'll try my best. All, all school districts saw a decline in enrollment this school year compared to last school year, and it was attributed to the pandemic. So to, and when you have a drop in enrollment, you have a drop in revenue. So financially hurt many districts. So what state, what the whole harmless clause was that if you had a drop in enrollment, you could use last year's enrollment count to generate your revenues this year. Do we follow that? So you continue with the same level of enrollment as last year, so you not suffer a enrollment loss. This bill is not that. It is, you already get, there's already a law that says you get some relief if you have declining enrollment. So they're just building upon that. It's not the same level. It's a much lower amount of, of hold harmless. In other words, you get less revenue than keeping, getting what you got last year as far as revenue. So this formula is not as generous as a whole harmless formula. Does everybody follow that? Hopefully.
Yeah, so not as generous, but maybe more likely to succeed.
Yes, more likely, yes.
Okay, so better than nothing.
It all depends upon the state forecast that will come up in March, the first week of March. If we still see a deficit, it's going to be very difficult to get any revenue bills passed. But if there's, if the deficit goes away, there's a better chance that we can get funding for education.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate that.
Director Olson?
I'd just also like to point out to the viewing community, I know there's a lot of people who are following our state report of schools and what we're doing about that. And the Teachers of Color Bill HF 217, that's HF 217. I want to follow that because there's a lot of great ideas that align with our, you know, our diversity advisory committee work. And the community can help us with this.
Correct. Thank you. Okay, so I think we're ready to vote. Okay, so all those in favor on approving this resolution for legislative priorities 2021, please say aye. Director Bibi?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Thoreau?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Steiger?
Aye.
Director Starks?
Aye.
And Cormen, aye. So this one has been approved too. Thank you. Okay, our next one. We have a resolution authorizing Superintendent to select and implement learning models and other COVID-19-related matters. Could someone please read that resolution? Director Steiger?
I saw Director Bennett. If he really wants it, he can have it. Okay, all right. Be a result, Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 adopts the attached resolution regarding the implementation of learning models for the 2020-2021 school year as well as other COVID-19-related matters. So would you like me to read the whole resolution? Or are you reading that part? I mean.
You mean the following page?
Yeah, that whole page. Are you reading that or not?
You know, Mr. Holman, do we need to read it?
No, you don't.
All right.
I would assume that everybody already read it, am I right? On board members? Yeah, okay, good, then we're good. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Bennett. Okay, so this resolution. At the beginning of the pandemic, when we had to start making decisions, we were, or we received a recommendation from Minnesota School Board Associations on, as they understood and as we understood the direction of the state, that school board members would be the people in the district in charge of making the decisions for learning models or every other decision that was related to COVID-19. As time went by, I know there were some questioning regarding who should be making those decisions. Should the board continue to do it? There were some school districts that decided to, to pass that kind of decision to authorize the superintendent and administration to make those decisions. But I think at that point, we as a school board, I don't think we were ready to take that step. I think we were kind of like, kind of wondering if we should or we should not. There was a time in one of our meetings that I also quickly brought it up, you know, should we just authorize a superintendent from now on to continue to make the decisions himself? And nobody seemed to be ready to take that step. And during this time, I think it was after the summer, that Minnesota School Board Associations also released a sample resolution for school boards that were interested in, in making this, this kind of decision. So having heard different opinions about it, I just want to make sure that this board has clarification on what is next. What are we going to do now? Who's going to make those decisions? And that is the reason why I have brought this resolution to you and just kind of see what, what you guys think about it. So anyone? Any discussion? Director Bennett?
Yes, so in 917, District 917, we passed a similar resolution back in the summer. And it does make things run smoother because when, instead of having, if there's like an outbreak, instead of having to convene a school board meeting and take a vote to change models, the superintendent and the chair can do it. Or if the governor changes his guidelines, we don't have to have another meeting. We can just have the chair and the superintendent, you know, have a conversation to change models. And we don't have to set a special meeting and wait three days or wait to the next meeting. So I think this is a good idea to have this resolution so that we can have this in place. So when decisions need to be made quickly, we don't have to scramble to make, have an emergency meeting or anything like that. I'm just, the request that the, the chair and the superintendent just keep the board informed of any, any decisions as soon as, as soon as possible. That's all my only request, but aside from that, I support this resolution.
Thank you, Director Bennett. Director Starks?
Yeah, so as Director Bennett one time joked that we watch other school board meetings for fun, that is true. There was another school board meeting that I watched last week that passed this resolution as well. I think, you know, that's the trend now is, is that we've, we've been in this seat, in this decision-making seat a lot, and it's been challenging. And I do want to say, I know that I have stepped firmly into management sometimes in some of these school board meetings. And so my apologies to administration and cabinet for any time that I did that. I think it's really hard, especially as a brand-new school board member, to see that line between governance and management in this school reopening process has been highlighting how hard that line can be. So I'm excited to, to allow the administration and cabinet to be making decisions more rapidly with the data that they have that we as school board maybe, school board members may not have. And so I just appreciate the, the collaboration and communication we've had up to now and then what we can do going forward.
Correct. Thank you, Director Starks. Director Steiger?
Yeah, I just want to point out to board colleagues that there is a line in the big long page that we were discussing that says right in it, "After consultation with the school board chair and notification to the school board to select and implement a different learning model." So it is clarifying that we would need to be notified before also. So that should take care of the question of making sure we're in the loop. Thank you.
Great point. Director Bibi?
Yes, I, I think this is important for us to pass tonight because we need to trust those that are making these difficult decisions. And our superintendent has contact with them and is able to, you know, make wise decisions. And we need to trust. I think we've seen that this has been a process. We understand what goes into the process. And so it's not like there's something that would happen without good discussion and wisdom and, and also the contact with the chair and trusting our chair in, in her connections with the superintendent and others in administration. So I'm definitely for this, and I think it, it would alleviate some of the stress on us and to know that this can be taken care of in a, in a quick manner. Just like how things happened with having to change just really abruptly on that Thursday when we discovered transportation had this, you know, outbreak of COVID. It had to be acted on quickly. I was pretty shocked because I hadn't been notified up until the phone call. But, you know, we got the email the next day that gave more explanation, which helped us to see the process. And that is what I'm, I'm hoping we'll get before it goes out in the public. So that's my only comment on that. But it sounds like a good idea.
Thank you, Director Bibi. And you bring up a good point as well, you know, sometimes when those decisions have to be made so quickly because it's an emergency basically. And administration has to move really quick. Sometimes there's not that much time to go into the deep details of the information that we will be receiving. So I know that we usually get that first email where it tells us what's going on, what's going to happen, and gets a little bit of explanation. But of course, then after that, we get more details when staff is finally able to get to that point. So just a reminder, you know, for us as well as for the members of our community too, that sometimes those, those take time because there is all this group of people that are trying to take care of the emergency that's taking place. So thank you, Director Bibi, for bringing that up. Did I see another hand? Oh, Director Olson, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, we aren't, as school board members, we aren't experts on the science or the medical aspect of these decisions that we've had to make. And it has been, it has been stressful. And I would, I'm glad that our administration has expert advice when they make these decisions. And I trust, I trust their decisions. So I would also support this.
Thank you. And Director Starks?
So either Superintendent Fujitake or maybe Hannah, if she's still on. The COVID numbers, so if we were to go over 30, for example, when our secondary is in hybrid, how much wiggle room do we have? If we go up to 31, we have to stop immediately? Or do we have some ability to let it go up to 31, see if it goes back down below 30? Could you share a little bit about that decision-making?
I'm not sure. Yeah.
I can take it. I'm still on. I'm sorry, I'm having some internet issues. No, so we do not need to flip if one week it goes right above 30. Just like I explained when we're looking at switching models to a less restrictive environment, we want it to be in the center of the, we want to see a downward trend and have it be well within the case numbers. And then we want to see consistency over a few weeks. The same would be if we are switching to a more restrictive environment. We would have some concern with that as it can obviously spike very quickly, especially with these variant strains that we're seeing. So, but part of that would not be that if we just see it be hit 31, automatically we are switching back to distance learning. It would look the same as our process for going to a less restrictive environment. So we would have conversation with public health. We would watch and see what are the daily trends looking like? What are the seven-day trends? What are the 14-day trends? What are the predictions? And if we're seeing that trend upward and we are concerned about it, we would start having a conversation about what that transition would look like and the timing for that transition.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else, Director Thoreau? I don't know if you. I didn't see your hand up. Oh, there you are.
No, I, I just, I agree. It's, our superintendent is a CEO and we are like a board of directors of any corporation. So naturally, an awful lot of things can be done administratively, but they must be done in conjunction with the board of directors. So that's why we have the chair and everything else like that. But remembering that, that he still is the CEO and can make some decisions, we just need to be relied, relying on whatever decisions are being made.
Correct. And yeah, with this resolution, we're once again acknowledging that we are, we trust the superintendent and his administration with those type of decisions. And I will continue to work together with the superintendent. And, you know, if, if this resolution passes, all I'm asking the school board tonight is, let's own it, okay, as for what it is. And, you know, as I say, that we're trusting the superintendent. That includes the recommendations of our principals too. You know, the people who are directly involved with our kids there in buildings or virtually every single day. Okay, so I think we are ready to vote. So all those in favor of approving this resolution for Superintendent authorizing to implement learning models COVID-related matters, please say aye. Director, let's start with Director Starks.
Aye.
Director Steiger? Aye. Director Thoreau?
Aye.
Director Olson?
Aye.
Director Bennett?
Aye.
Director Bibi?
Aye.
And Cormen, aye. So this resolution has been approved. Thank you. Okay. Perfect. So I think we're out of part B now. Wow, we're moving into board member reports. Any board members with reports? Director Bennett?
Just updates on 917. At our last board meeting last week, we unanimously voted to rename the Training Center at Concord Education Center. We renamed it to the Jill Lewis Training Center in honor of our former chair, who we lost to cancer last fall. And it really reminded me how here in Bloomington, several years ago, we renamed our boardroom after Arlene Bush in honor of her decades of service. And I think it's, it's a really, it's a good thing to do for districts when you have someone who makes a huge impact on your district for decades and, and spends a career there to honor them by something like that. And Jill was very much about professional development. And she was going to make sure that our employees are getting the most professional development possible. So it's a fitting name that we're renaming the education or the, the Training Center after her. And also in 917, as you guys know, we are in the middle of a superintendent search. And we have hired MSBA to be our consultants to help us with that search. And we had one training session last week, and we did a survey of board members to what kind of qualities they want in the superintendent. And one of the next steps is going to be a survey that's going out to our member districts. We want to hear from the superintendents and special ed directors and high school principals, what qualities they would like to see in a superintendent. So our administrative staff here will have an opportunity to weigh in on that. And another thing, next Tuesday, we'll be having a, a school board policy committee meeting. So the next board meeting will start the new process of how we're going to be reviewing policy. So just to, to review for everybody, we're going to have, this is going to be three readings of policies. So the first reading So the first reading will be in the the Policy Committee meeting. And then if the majority of the committee members are okay with the policy, then it comes to the board for a second reading, which will be no action taken, just for information and for questions. And then if the majority of the board is okay with the policy at that point, then it comes to the school board for a third reading, which will be is when it's adopted and that'll be in the consent agenda. So hopefully it'll run as smoothly as all that sounds, but it is a new new process. So hopefully it'll work. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bennett. Any other reports? Director Olson.
Okay, this is short. Um, I wanted to let everyone know that the Bloomington United for Youth is having a virtual volunteer recognition awards ceremony on Thursday, February eleventh, seven o'clock PM. So that's very soon. And it's to acknowledge volunteer accomplishments that are related to helping our youth in our community. So I think it's really important and I'm excited about it.
Yeah. Thank you, Director Olson. Director Bibi.
Yes, I'm excited about that event too. I'm so glad that Director Olson mentioned that. I also led the meeting tonight, or I should say Molly Coyne, who was our guest at our Bloomington Student Advisory Council Middle School Group. And we talked about some of the social emotional learning needs and things that we need to look at ourselves and find a an area where we have a strength, but also an area where we need growth. And there was a lot of different discussion and it was really lively. It was encouraging. I think we have some good leaders coming up. So it was very enjoyable and they're looking forward to getting together again in April. Now, we've changed the date because of Ramadan. And so the date will be on April nineteenth instead of the twelfth. So, and I continue to attend to AMSD meetings. I have to say it's been difficult with the cold to get out in the community much. But one of our methods, I guess, of community engagement right now is receiving your emails and listening to you. And I really appreciate that. And we got an email from someone who lives down the street from me. And so that was encouraging, someone from my own neighborhood. So we are listening and we do care. And it is a way that we can engage with you. So thank you very much to those of you who have been writing in. I think that's it for right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Bibi. Director Sorum.
Yes, we had Beth and I did attend the Insurance Committee meeting of last month. And it's always good to hear that our annual projection were right on track, monthly claims aggregate were seventy seven percent to contract. But we have some high cases that may hit our stop loss, but then that's been expected. And we talked a little bit about our X savings solution and healthy savings for so many of our people who are getting prescriptions. So we meet again next month and try to get an update on that, but things are going well within our our insurance self-insurance programs. I also attended the meeting of Bloomington Community Education Advisory Council, and that was kind of interesting. We did receive, once again, Region Four Award of Excellence, twenty twenty Award of Excellence for projects. And that was where we had our special books that leap high into books on the twentieth. We won't be able to do it this year, twenty twenty one, but they said they're gonna hold the trophy until next year when we have this project again too. We also heard from Bernetta Redford, our service food service director, talking about the Grab and Go Meal Program that has been provided and it's going so well. Especially for the kids for the distribution on Friday for their take home meals on Saturday and Sunday. And then with that, leads up so many of the other ones from Andrew Wilkins and the BOS, as well as Jake talking about our Metro South AVE program doing distance learning and being quite successful with that. So it was a real good meeting. And those two are the end of my report.
Thank you, Director Sorum. Director Starks.
So I was gonna mention the same that Director Bibi mentioned in the legislative update about the MSBA legislative updates on Fridays. So I highly encourage folks to go. And then I did the coffee and conversation with the Minnesota School Board Association that morning too. And it was the Twin Cities and the Southern Districts together. So that was kind of fun. And it's just really interesting to hear how we all are struggling with the similar things. And so it's just a really a great time to connect with other folks. The other thing that I, oh, well, Director Bibi mentioned to the middle school meeting, I taught middle school. I love that age. It was so much fun to be with them even just for an hour tonight. So thank you to the middle schoolers that came. And then the Early Learning Services Group met must have been two weeks ago now. And they had two folks from the city of Bloomington, Parks and Recreation Department come and talk about the master plan, the project that they're working on. And they received feedback from the parents that were at the Early Learning Services presentation or meeting specific to what do families with kids under the age of five, what are they looking for in the park system in Bloomington? And it was a really awesome conversation. Not having kids under the age of five anymore, my uses of parks are very different than the the families with young children. So I really liked it. So as a community member, if anyone has not yet given their feedback to the city in their master parks plan, I highly encourage you as a community member to go do that because they're looking for feedback from every every age, every location in Bloomington. How do you use parks? What do you like best? What do you, what would you like to see improved? So it was a great conversation and I appreciate being part of that group.
Okay, thank you. Director Bibi, you have your hand up?
Yes, I also wanted to give a shout out to Director Starks because she gave an excellent workshop at the MSBA Conference on community engagement, along with a friend of hers who's worked with her in the Minnesota PTA. And it was, it was excellent. I just want to say we have someone who is really on top of it. And I really appreciate having a board member who is able to contribute to other districts in this way. And it looked like it was pretty well attended, so it was very exciting and I got some great information. Thanks.
Nice. Well, thank you. Thank you, Director Starks. Anyone else? I think we already had everyone, correct? Okay, so now we're going to move into superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you, Chair Corbin. For the past thirty years, our district has had a Bloomington Public Schools Senior Achievement Awards Program. The program recognizes outstanding Jefferson and Kennedy High School seniors. So if you're a staff member, a parent or community member, you can also, you can nominate a senior for one of four categories of recognition, curriculum excellence, artistic excellence, volunteerism, or leadership. So the way you nominate is you can contact the respective nominee's high school no later than four PM Friday, February twenty six. Then a committee is going to review all the nominations and select students to be recognized at of Bloomington Public Schools Senior Awards Program that's going to be held on May the third. So if you're a parent, you're you're a staff member or you're a community member, you can you can nominate a worthy senior for recognition. It's a great program. I encourage everybody to nominate people. So thank you very much, Chair Corbin.
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki. And we usually, in this area, we don't get to hear from Assistant Superintendent Dr. Mitchler. And I don't want to put you in the spot, but I just think that your voice is so important in this district too. And we don't always get to hear much, especially during a night that we're hearing about secondary. So if you have anything that you would like to add to tonight's meeting, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Corbin. So I will. Thanks for the opportunity. I'll just, I'll reiterate again the gratitude that people have shared tonight. I mean, there are a lot of people working really, really hard right now, and I don't mean even just staff. It is staff working hard, but families are working really hard. I have a distance learner here in fifth grade and I see it. I see the hard work and it's it's incredible. So we're navigating these really, really challenging times and we're doing it together. So thank you again, everyone. And thanks to the board too for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchler. And thank you, Director Deena, for being here with us tonight too. And as we're going recognizing people, neighbors, you're the other woman in attendance here, so thank you for being with us tonight. It's important to recognize each other as we are in a setting like this and we're not rushing through the ten thirty. So it's good. Okay, um, any other business? No other business? Then I would like to make a motion for adjournment.
Second, Bibi.
Thank you. So all those in favor of adjournment at the meeting, please say aye. Director Bibi.
Aye.
Director Bennett.
Aye.
Director Olson.
Aye.
Director Sorum.
Aye.
Director Steiga.
Aye.
Director Starks.
Aye.
And Cormen, aye. And this meeting has been adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, BCTB. Have a good night. Thanks, Deb Uncle.